Good evening, everybody. You are at a meeting of the common council Tuesday, November 25th, 2025. It is 6:10 PM, Wausau City Hall, Council chambers. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
We have 11 voting members present.
All right, no proclamations tonight. We do have one pre-registered resident to speak. I'm going to read the public comment statement first.
The city of Wausau recognizes the value of public comment on local issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on city matters. Please identify yourself by name and state your address. Each statement made by a participant should be limited to three minutes. Direct all comments to the chair, not to members, staff, or other participants. People addressing the council shall not disrupt the orderly course of business. The chair values civil discourse and may interrupt, terminate, or prohibit public comment that do not adhere to these rules.
All right, first up is Cooper Johnson.
Everything I'm about to go over, oh, sorry. Cooper Johnson, 1748 Cherry Street. Everything I'm about to go over is sourced through public record. I've also reviewed public statements from the mayor and the council. Affordability and balance matters, but so does transparency. Before I begin, I want to prevent confusion about my own statements. On November 11th, I spoke about balance and growth and affordability. I spoke about worries about affordability, and yes, I stand on it. That's why I don't condone imaginary savings, and I don't condone misusing concerns. So my first question is, if these supposed park development savings, department savings, were intended for 2026, then why were they never verified? And why were numbers released by our mayor to the public before finance had even had a chance to verify them? If they were not intended for the 2026 budget, then why did they appear in the 2026 veto explanation? It's reasonable to say rejecting unverified savings is not negligence. It's fiscal responsibility. Savings cannot be dodged if they do not exist yet. That parks idea has been dismissed time after time for being non-viable. We do not have the space, equipment, or individuals to get all that. It would require money spent, which would eat up proposed savings, as Alders have addressed. I also want to clarify the 2026 budget versus the 2027 referendum. Firefighters are fully funded in 2026. That has already been planned. The referendum addresses 2027. Why are we seeing public statements from our mayor about others kicking a can down the line without a sustainable plan when the firefighter positions were timed years ago with a planned closure of TID-6, but inflation and levy limits reduced the financial space that closure was supposed to create? That's why the gap appears in 2027, not because anyone just ignored it. Cutting any firefighters should never be a favored proposal. It would directly compromise public safety. In a substantial emergency, we cannot risk being understaffed. Our priority must always be ensuring every responder goes home and calls our respondent to efficiently. We also cannot just simply rely on mutual aid. That would bring us back to the staffing hole patched years ago. Also, reducing staffing inhibits long-term savings because adequate staffing deters overtime spikes. And I want to recognize the fire chief for actively trying to secure state or partnership support to hopefully reduce the referendum impact. As the mayor, why say the council is pawning firefighters when they were just responding to the fear messaging which originated from unverified numbers shared publicly by the mayor? And I stand on my November 11th statements, we do have undeniable fiscal concerns. However, let's not forget the 2026 budget was proposed by our mayor, who is now vetoing essentially the same budget justified by park savings being ignored that were never verified or viable. So I need to ask the mayor, why are unverified numbers about firefighting and park savings going to the public before they can go to finance to be properly reviewed? Why is fear being released before verified facts? We deserve accountability without scapegoating and a full picture without contradictions. And as the mayor said on January 28th, everything I do is in the light of day. That standard has not been met. Suggesting to cut even one firefighter is not what's best for Wausau. Wausau is strongest when we stand as one community, not when leaders put residents against their own representatives. That's all.
Thank you. The door is always open. All right, up next is the consent agenda. Would entertain a motion. Okay, motion from Watson, second from Neal.
You may begin voting. You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
Okay, up next, under Item 6, Ordinances and Resolutions, and without objection, I'd like to take 25-1102 first. Last meeting, we had a gentleman sit here for three and a half hours to be appointed to the Ethics Board, so let's take 25-1102. Would entertain a motion. Okay, motion from Watson, second from Greiner. Alder Lukens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I've got a question on this. I know that you had submitted a number of appointments in the past to the Ethics Board, and I guess, you know, given traditionally with, given the Ethics Committee obligations, I guess, and the roles of the people who have served, it's tended always to be people, I think, that, like, you know, attorneys and ministers and doctors, people that are working with it on a day-to-day basis. So I was just kind of curious as to how many, how many people have applied for the Ethics Committee this term? Do you know?
I don't know if I could give you an exact number. I know there were at least three, but of the ones that I was able, who I was able to contact and talk to prior to tonight's meeting, there was one. I think, I think it's important to note that as the Police and Fire Commission is constituted, even by statute, it's required that no more than three members be of a particular party, and we test that every April to make sure that's the case. I think the same rule should apply. We should have a balance of, of cross-section of our community serving. We, we appointed last month a doctor. We have two attorneys, a retired attorney, and I don't know what the rest of their makeup is, but, I mean, I'd gladly get more background from the candidate if he'd, if he'd be interested in telling you what his background is and why he's qualified. But I don't, I don't think there's a requirement under the statute to be an attorney, and as, as we've seen, you know, I don't think, I don't think the function either is positively or negatively affected by an attorney on the board.
No, I, I don't either, but I know that this application was just this month, and I know that there have been other ones, so I'm, I guess, I'm kind of wondering, because there are three, you know, three committees that are listed on this application, and so I guess, you know, I'm kind of, I was wondering about that, and there may not be a requirement, but it's just traditionally been those kinds of positions. Thank you.
Okay, and I, I'm pretty sure that Jesse Kearns is not an attorney, and I don't think Kay Palmer is, but we have three positions to fill in the next couple of months, so we will be giving more opportunities if, if those types do want to come and raise their hands. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually got a contact from a couple of citizens about this over the weekend. One, that I had kind of a detailed conversation with, who had concerns about us appointing the same citizens to multiple citizen appointments. This particular applicant is already serving on another citizen panel in a, in a citizen-driven position, and that citizen's concerns, or at least the person that called me's concerns, came to light after we appointed Dr. Garver, because he was also serving on yet another citizen appointment at the same time. You know, and they had mentioned back when, you know, we, when Deb Hadley was proposed for the Ethics Board, she was also put on the Water Commission. So I think that the person that contacted me is looking for some variety, I guess, in who we're appointing to these citizen positions, and it's not the same person to two or three assignments. The other concern that I heard was that they really are, or at least the person I talked to was questioning the qualifications of the applicant, because, you know, they too mentioned that in the context of the ethics subject, that you would expect that those citizen seats would be occupied by people who are governed by some sort of ethical standard in their personal life or in their career. So they also recognized that in the past, we've had physicians, we've had attorneys, we've had clergy, we've had, you know, a variety of walks of life represented within the Ethics Board, but those were the concerns that were voiced to me as well, was first the same person getting appointed to two or three different posts, and then, you know, like, where is that qualification, where, you know, there, there needs to be some type of ethical standard that those members are governed by themselves that really puts them in a position to understand the concept of professional ethics in the first place, and then be able then to apply those standards to whatever may come before them as a board. So I wasn't sure how to respond to that in the moment on Saturday, but I advised the citizen that I would make those concerns known here, because that really was all I could do with it at that, at that point. So that's, that's what I heard over the weekend about this.
Well, I've read the ordinance, and I've just cited what it, what the requirements are. If you'd like to change the ordinance, by all means. We have two, two members on the current board who serve on other committees. Jesse Kearns is on, was on two different committees, so he was on three different committees. I didn't, you know, we take people who step up to the plate and, and volunteer for these positions. So I, that's where we are in this situation. If you watched any of that Ethics Board meeting, meetings, there were about 12 of them, I wouldn't wish that on anyone. So to, to get somebody that, who is willing to step up and possibly put, put their life on hold for a period of months, you know, it's not an easy task. We have put out some recruitment efforts. I do have several others in the queue, and like I said, we will have three by April to fill. So we're going to have a cross-section of people. I don't know the politics of the current appointee of, of Mr. Filts, but I guess I probably would guess it doesn't align with mine. So I, I don't have a problem putting cross-section of, of people, cross-section of, of ideas and philosophies on these boards. That's how we get good decisions, and I'm confident that, I, I know Mr. Filts through our Veterans Connection, I believe, is when I first met, over some Army talk. So I, I do believe he has a background that would lend itself to leadership and ethics and doing the right thing. I don't, I don't know how you can question that. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't believe that our Ethics Committee needs people who are attorneys, or pastors, or have a background like that. I look at our City Council, and we hope that all of us have ethical standards. We don't all have backgrounds that provide ethical training. I know Mr. Filts from the Bike and Peds Committee. I don't have a personal connection with him, but have interacted with him at City Hall, and I find him to be extremely well-informed about city policies and procedures, and he's honest, and he's straightforward, and I would support his appointment to the Ethics Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Neal.
Thank you. Well, as Alder Killian pointed out, I also know Mr. Filts through our, being on the same Bike and Ped Committee. And over the months of, you know, meetings that I've been in with Mr. Filts, he's, he's made comments about what's going on in the city and city government and whatnot. He's definitely paying attention. He's involved, he's, he's interested. He says things that are apropos. He, he might be a more conservative person than me, I don't really know. I don't know about that, but he is personable in the meetings. He's, he comports himself well in the meetings, has good things to say. He's concerned about things like access to people for bike, from the Bike and Ped perspective, safety of our kids, things like that. So he's concerned and involved, and because of that, I would support him in this nomination.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 9 to 2.
Congratulations, I think. All right, up next is Item 25. It's file number 25-1101. This is the veto override consideration of the resolution from the Finance Committee adopting the 2026 City of Wausau budget and general property tax to support the same. So I would entertain a motion. We have a motion from Rasmussen, second from Neal. And under the statute, I'm required to, under a veto, give you a veto message, and that's, that's what I did, which you saw, and well, I can summarize it here for you, but essentially, the, the question at hand here, it's, it's an up or down vote on the vetoed, on the vetoed budget. There won't, there are no amendments that are made at this point, so you have an opportunity to have eight votes to override the veto, and if the, if the override fails, then the veto stands and the budget reverts to what I had vetoed. And simply put, because it wasn't real clear in my message, we have a $1.4 million tax hike looming. The city of Wausau has currently 356 employees. Pre-2020, prior to the grant funding jobs, we had 332. So in the past five years, we've added five, 24 positions, and many of them on one-time grants, which we've talked about expiring at the end of '26. So to fully close the 2027 fiscal cliff, we really only need to get back to 344 employees, which represents about 3.4% or roughly 12 FTEs, and they could come from any of the 356. It does not have to be just 12 firefighters. So it's one out of 29 current firefighters. We have an annual turnover of about 20 to 25 employees. So we should be able to do this through attrition, retirements, and not filling open spots. The rest, so the rest really can come from anywhere. Bottom line, we grew 7% in employees the last five years. 3.4% or thereabouts is not a draconian cut, so we could avoid the referendum, avoid the tax hike, firefighters stay, taxpayers win. So that's the statement, so you really have, you know, the vote, the vote is simple, either override or not override, and what I'm asking for is that, you know, don't exclusively focus on the firefighters. It could come from anywhere. And I guess a silver lining in this whole thing is I've gotten more feedback from more Alders in the last two weeks than I have in the last year and a half. So people are thinking, people are talking, residents are talking, and they have their eye on what's going on and, and what we may need to do moving forward. So we do have the motion from Rasmussen, second from Neal. Tom Neal is up first.
Thank you. Some might remember at our last meeting, when we passed the budget, that I initially was voicing some concerns and reservations and whatnot, and even kind of stated that I wouldn't support it unless there was some amended amendments that came forward. Subsequently, several of the members here of council spoke very well in support of the proposed budget, made some really good points, changed my mind clearly, so I voted for it. Nothing to me has really changed in the interim, so I will continue to support. I just want to verify that a yes vote is to override the veto.
That is correct. So a yes vote would then, if you got eight votes, would it, would pick up the budget right where it left off last time, and it would be implemented.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I also will be supporting this budget. It was clear through our action last time that we overwhelmingly supported the budget. 2026 is funded. We know that we have budget concerns coming for 2027, and I think work needs to begin on that right away in the spring. I think that we will be able to find those solutions. The feedback that I received post-veto is that citizens were very concerned, first about the action itself, second about the fact that the two-week delay that it essentially created, bringing us to this point tonight, would delay the mailing of tax bills for folks that are waiting to get those payments made before the end of the calendar year so that they can secure those income tax deductions for incurring that expense during the 2025 year. So I did not receive any feedback from anyone that was positive that toward the action that got taken, it was more confusion, and people were just not happy with that, and the guidance that I got from within my district was that if 2026 is funded, get it done, get the wheels set in motion on that, and then get to work on 2027, but I don't think that we should be commingling the two. The 2027 problem does not exist in the 2026 budget. Even though those funding sources were difficult to locate, they were located, and so all of the expenses that are proposed in that budget are essentially funded, and that budget left the Finance Committee as complete as I feel it's going to get. So, thank you.
I think we're all in agreement that we can't set it and forget it and wait till September, so this will be January till the end of next year, and any, anything that's in the 2026 budget is on the table for, if, if somebody wants to bring a cut recommendation or cost savings, bring it, and it's a budget modification, and we will hear those. Seeing nothing further?
You may begin voting. Motion passes 9 to 2.
All right, watch the newsletter. We've got some exciting announcements. Mary Ann and staff have some cost cuts and some initiatives that will hopefully excite you. Up next is Item 03-1111. It's a joint resolution from Human Resources Committee and Finance Committee authorizing 3% cost of living adjustment for non-represented employees effective December 21st, 2025. And I didn't record the votes. Unanimous in both?
I believe, I believe it was unanimous.
We have a motion from Henke, second from Watson.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right, Item 7 is suspension of the rules. Rule 1D, transmission of committee business to the council, and 11A, referral of resolutions. Motion from Henke, is that the last one? Motion from Lukens, second from Watson.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to 1.
First up is, is File 13-0913, Resolution from Finance Committee Approving Lease Extension with Resurrection Parish of the Diocese of La Crosse. Motion is from Lukens, second from Watson.
You may begin voting. Motion passes.
Martin's.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Hold on, I gotta, I gotta mark your present first. Would you want to vote yes? So motion passes 11 to 0.
All right, up next, is this the item that was tabled at Finance? 23-0514, Resolution from Common Council Approving Master Payment Amount Purchase Agreement and Joiner Agreement between City of Wausau Additional Seller and NSPP Law Services and Napoli Skolnik PLLC Initial Sellers and NS Buyer 2025-1 LLC Purchaser. What was the vote from?
It didn't go to Finance.
Oh, it didn't? Oh, that's why we're...
This, 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 this item did not appear before Finance today. This is direct to council.
Oh. Okay. So we have a motion from Lukens, second from Neal. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I struggle with this agreement a little bit, just because it doesn't quite feel right. I think we were smart to join the PFAS litigation, and that has borne fruit. I think that is a positive for us. I mean, obviously, we incurred a lot of expense to address PFAS over the last few years. I do think that it would be short-sighted of us to be so interested in speedy payment that we're willing to forego a half a million dollars. Partly because, the reason this structured settlement is structured the way it is over time, nationwide, 3M is obviously facing this type of judgment, those structured settlements and those payouts over time are likely designed to keep them from collapse or economic hardship. That said, the people that want to buy this agreement and wait the, you know, eight years to collect our money certainly wouldn't be interested in doing that if it was risky or if there was danger that they wouldn't be able to collect that money. And so I feel like we need to be patient and let those checks come in every year and collect all of the money. We spent so much addressing, addressing PFAS, we need every dollar we can get to get back. And so I am not going to support entering into this agreement. I think that we need to take advantage of our full settlement and not be so hasty to have cash in hand that we forego a large... have cash in hand that we forego a large chunk of money. So I will not be supporting this.
Alder Killian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Alder Rasmussen. We shouldn't be rushing to do this. This proposal doesn't appear to serve any long-term interests or benefits for our residents. Instead, what it seems to do, it appears to gain the settlement money as quickly as possible, even while we're forfeiting up to almost half a million dollars. The optics of the proposal appear that it will gain money more quickly to fund possibly unrelated expenses or shortfalls. We should not be taking any action tonight that may lessen the amount we receive. And that prompts the question, how did this even get on the agenda tonight? I was a little concerned about that. What we should be doing, in my opinion, is asking the question, what can we do with this water settlement money to most effectively bring relief to our residents on their water rates and their water bills, not selling off a portion of the settlement to an investment firm or a bank? Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Neal.
Thank you. Well, yeah, it is a head-scratcher a little bit. Of course, everything I'm hearing from constituents is a resounding no. I mean, there's, it's like, what? You're gonna do what? And that's like, I haven't heard anybody say, yeah, do that. So there is that. But we have to always, you know, look at it from all the angles we can. I haven't really heard anything in the proposal or elsewise. If we took the discounted, you know, lump payment, what would we do with it to the benefit of the taxpayers? What would we, what's the plan, other than to what, you know, just put it in the bank and fritter it away here and there, or what? I mean, if there was some compelling plan that our constituents could see, wow, that would be a good thing, and maybe we wouldn't get all these no's that we've been getting. But all we've been getting is no's and with no plan. You know, this really comes out to, what, about $55,000 a year for eight more years? So it's not a windfall, per se. In the aggregate, it is between $400,000 and $500,000. But it is like 50-some a year. So that's not, you know, groundbreaking. So we might be able to make a better, more informed decision here if we were weighing that $55,000 a year for eight years versus what could we do of import right now? And I don't have that choice in front of me. So I'm reticent to vote at all, but, you know, if we're compelled to vote, fine. I'm tempted to make a motion to table until I can have that choice of A and B.
So we, you were tempted? Is that, is that an actual motion, Tom?
That's a motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Neal to table. And do we have a second?
Is that indefinitely or to a future meeting date?
I'd be happy for it to be at the next meeting.
Till the next meeting. All right, so motion from Neal to table till the next meeting. Is there a second? Not seeing any? Okay, for lack of a second, we will vote. Well, we have a couple that left in the queue that want to speak, I think. I would ask, maybe we should ask the city attorney if there's, if there are time-sensitive wickets here we're trying to meet.
I do not believe so, but if you will recall, they came to us around August, and we signed or you approved that letter of intent, which was not binding. And so that's why they brought this forward at this point, which they just sent, I want to say like last week. And then they said, sign it and turn it around in three business days. And I said, excuse me, this has to go to the council in our next meeting now, so it had to have been after the 11th, is the 25th. Okay, then you need to get it signed after the 25th, before the end of the week. And I said, well, that's got to be Wednesday then, because we're closed Thursday and Friday. So I asked if there was a specific cutoff or deadline after which this offer would no longer be available, and I did not get a clear answer from them. And you're pointing out all the things that, you know, he pointed out to us. There is no right or wrong answer, it's just whether you have a purpose for the money right away, and you can put it to good use, or you can afford to wait and take it all. Those are all very relevant considerations. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, are we on the motion to table? We can kill that.
So it dies for lack of a second, correct?
Lack of second, correct. Sorry, Tom, I can't second that. All right, back to the base. All right, we have Alder Lukens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the city attorney for the explanation, and I agree with the others here. I actually received some phone calls from some constituents who thought that we had brought this forward, and we had some plans to spend money on something else, or some hidden deal, or something like that. So I did explain, no, that, you know, we weren't, we weren't aware of this either. No one here was. So anyway, this, I feel the same. I would not be in favor of voting to approve this. I don't see any reason at this point to, you know, receive those payments sooner. So I think we should get the full amount paid out over the nine, over the nine years. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. You know, I think it also bears notice that this agreement was brought forward by the law firm that was working with us on the class action lawsuit. And I believe that we have determined that there are some similar players amongst that firm and some of these buyers and sellers involved in this structured agreement. That said, the law firms agreed cut of the settlement, they get off the top anyway, so they will have been paid. There's no reason to enter into something like this so that any of them, as principals or some kind of conglomerate, get more. I think that the money that's left out of this is our money, and I think it behooves us to be patient and collect it year on year, and then once we have it, use it wisely. So I think that, you know, even though they want a quick turnaround on this, there's a reason they do, and it's probably a fairly safe bet for them that by waiting, they make easy money. And we can wait and make money, too. So I'm gonna vote no on this. Thanks.
All right. For the record, I don't support the annuity payment either, so let's, seeing no further questions?
You may begin voting. Motion fails 0 to 11.
Okay, we list closed session next, but I think we'll, we're not going to likely resume back into open, so let's finish the items that we have. We have announcements from the mayor and alders. Any alders with any announcements tonight? Seeing none, keep an eye on the newsletter coming up, newsletter's coming up first, second week in December. If you've got anything you want to put in there, let me know. Comments and suggestions from citizens for public comment occurring both before and after business meeting? You don't have to be pre-registered for this. Seeing none? All right. I would look for someone to read the closed session. Well, before we go to closed session, I'm going to appoint HR Director Noak as the clerk slash note-taker, and will be the only staff member in the meeting tonight. Alder Lukens.
Okay, so I make a motion that we adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, sub 1, sub F, to consider financial, medical, social, or personal histories, or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where paragraph B applies, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations, specifically to discuss an investigation into allegations against a City of Wausau official.
Okay, motion, and a second from Greiner. Hang on. Motion from Lukens, second from Greiner.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Lukens?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian? Neal?
Aye.
Greiner?
Aye.
McElany?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Tierney?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Hanky?
Aye.
Motion passes 11 to 0.
Ted, you can, I think we can, we're done with the video, we won't be back. Thank you.